I'm so happy to call this meeting to order. We actually have people other than the Board of Ed in the room. Thank you all for coming. Happy to see Bobby.
Very nice.
Nice to have everybody here. I'd like to start with public audience, if we have any, from anyone. And Katie, did anybody submit anything? No? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to committee reports and Board of Ed communications. So, my seating is all messed up. I'm not going to start with you, Amy. I'm going to start with Jen.
Is this on? Should I turn this on?
Is the green light on?
It's only for TV. You won't hear it.
Okay. Latimer celebrated Google Meet Spirit Day on March 12th to celebrate the one-year anniversary of going virtual for the rest of the year. During the week of March 8th, in celebration of National Read Across America Day, Central School participated in a school-wide Read-A-Thon. Squadron also celebrated Read Across America Day and had a PTO reading challenge where the students read over 129,000 minutes. Terrifield School had a Great Parent Conference Week. Student Council planned and ran a fundraiser on St. Patrick's Day at Henry James and donated $365 to the National Parks Foundation. And at the high school, most students have returned to full-time in-person learning.
How does that feel for you guys?
It feels like good, I think. I didn't notice a huge change when the freshmen and sophomores came back, but yeah, I think it's been going well.
Good. Good. Glad the weather's warm.
Traffic jams are back.
Yeah, that is true. Very true.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, traffic, and it's warm enough to eat outside this weekend.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So, that's helpful. All right, Mr. Watson.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Did you, communications?
Yeah, so I have it here. It's hard for me to read. I didn't bring my glasses.
I'm sorry. I don't need to put you on the spot.
So Tara wrote a write-up here. So Tara, sorry about this. Tara, Lydia and I met with Mike and Neil, Mike Luzetti, to talk about the Latimer Lane renovation. And I'll just summarize that a video has been prepared that we're going to roll out to the town, and our goal is to get as much information out to the public before the referendum.
The public hearing.
Before the public hearing, correct. So more coming up.
So that's our communications segment.
Yeah, we're going to share some of that tonight. Okay. It's a perfect time.
Thank you. Jeff?
So no glasses needed.
You pulled it off.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Spirit? Stan? All right, we're cruising. Mrs. Luntke?
Just two things. Next week, the Simsbury High School will start their Equity Week. So each day, for about an hour, students will be able to choose from about 25 different kinds of sessions. Some are virtual, some are in-person, ranging from a variety of topics relative to equity at the local, state, and national level. So we're really excited about these days, and we will certainly give you an update. The second piece of information is that we had our last first-dose staff vaccination clinic through the Farmington Valley Health District with 11 different towns participating. So over 2,000 educators came through the clinic and just want to thank the many medical, non-medical volunteers, and certainly our partners at the Farmington Valley Health Department for a very successful outcome.
I was so happy I got to be there on Saturday, as did my husband, to help out his volunteers, and just would like to thank the wellness classes at Henry James for all the signs on the walls, in the gyms, in the hallway. It was, I heard it time and again how appreciated it was by the people passing through the building.
Yes.
So just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thought it would be an opportune time to give you a little update on where we are with distance learning, as students at the high school certainly are coming back, but also we're seeing more families as vaccinations roll out, more comfortable with sending students back. So what I, we did a count day today because yesterday was a day when many elementary students, we waited until after conferences for those who wanted to come back to return to their classrooms. So today was a count day. So what I'm going to give you is like the comparison to October 1st where we were with distance learning to today. So at the elementary level on October 1st, we had 399 students in distance learning. We currently have 314, difference of 85. At Henry James on October 1st, we had 96 students in distance learning. We currently have 69, which is a difference of 27 students. And at Simsbury High School, we had 192 on October 1st. During December and January, we saw that number go as high as 280, and it is now back to 206. So it's a plus 14 since October 1st. So overall, it's 98 students who have returned to school from just below 700 students on October 1st to just below 600 students now. So just thought it was an interesting update to let you know kind of the trends that we're seeing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mrs. Marybeath?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Curtis?
I'm all set as well. I know we have a bunch of action items and get to our friends at Central School in a little bit to present, so keep it going.
I'm going to just quickly share. Lydia is traveling and she couldn't be here. She wanted me to just share some CAPE updates. She and I attended CAPE's Day on the Hill, and out of that, the Ed Committee held final testimonies on a large number of, a large number of CAPE members testified on at least 30 different bills. So we're waiting on April 5th. We'll know what's being rolled over. Regarding social-emotional learning, the goal is to get a state blueprint to districts because we don't want 166 individual plans in all the different districts. So the state is going to try to put together a plan for everybody. And virtual learning will come forth from the state level. Per the governor in a press conference, it will most likely continue for snow days, and chances are, it's not going to disappear anytime soon. And there are no opportunities for federal waivers on standardized testing. So those are kind of the big things coming out of that. And it was a really interesting day, and it had great participation virtually. So I was glad I was able to sit in and listen, and we had a couple of legislators show up and speak with us all. It was very informative. So there's a lot out there to keep an eye on, and Kate's doing a good job of keeping everybody informed. So we appreciate that.
And with that, we'll move into recommended actions. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes from February 23rd meeting.
No move.
You're good? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just because we have masks on, if you could just raise your hand so Katie gets that we're all speaking. Personnel. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, we have a number of retirements at the elementary level. This is a great deal of experience in our elementary classrooms that will be leaving us come June. Three veteran Simsbury educators. The first is Kathy Larkum, who is, many years as a primary teacher, has actually been a reading intervention teacher for the last few years, and she's one of those people that we moved back to the classroom. So she got to spend her now final year back in the first-grade classroom where she had spent so many years before that. So Kathy just gave me a letter announcing her intention to retire in June. Sandy LaFave at Latimer Lane, a fifth-grade teacher. You can see 24 years of experience. And then Anne Resinko, a second-grade teacher at Squadron Line, who's also made the decision that this will be her last year. I've talked to all three of these ladies. There was some thought last year, and as we were at home and people were teaching from home, they just said, "It can't end this way. I have to come back for one more." And they've been able to have the joy of having students in front of them again. So the motion is there for you to accept all three of these retirements, and I will note that it represents almost 70 years of experience in the classroom.
Anybody like to make that motion?
Sure. I'll move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Kathleen Larkum, Sandra LaFabra, and Anne Resinko, effective June 30th, 2021.
Second. Any discussion? I personally would just like to say thank you. Anne Resinko and Kathy Larkum were both at Squadron Line during my days there, and I'm sorry to see them go. And I'm sure Sandra was wonderful as well at Latimer Lane, so we appreciate all that longevity walking out the door.
Yeah.
Incredibly committed.
Yes.
And then one resignation.
Wait, we have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody in favor?
I know the rules.
Okay. Now we go to that.
Sorry. One resignation to present to the Board tonight. Brianna Loyat was a teacher that we just hired last summer. She actually had a leave of absence for maternity, and when her time ended, the way our leave policies work is if you don't have enough years of experience, you can't continue to get an unpaid leave. So she made the decision to resign her position, and so we have to accept that resignation, and she will make a decision about whether she will reapply for her position as we put it back up in a few weeks. So that's a decision she'll have to make about whether she's ready to come back for the fall. So.
Can we get a motion on that, please?
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Brianna Loyat, effective April 8th, 2021.
Second?
I'll second.
All of, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Approval of revised budget, public schools budget 2021.
Yes. Okay, so as you're aware, on March 9th, we presented to the Board of Finance, and at that time, we had some new information come to us that Amy brought to us from our insurance advisors about favorability in the insurance line item. So we presented a budget to the Board of Finance that was below the budget we had approved the prior week with the Board of Education. So this is a bit of a formality. This is the number that I'll speak to when we get to the Latimer piece that's being moved forward to the public hearing, but I'd like to have a formal motion made this evening about the new increase amount of 1.85 percent. The motion stands as printed. If somebody could approve that.
I'll move that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2021-22 public school budget in the amount of $73,643,930, which represents an increase of $1,335,455, or 1.85 percent.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I do just want to thank the Board of Finance. You know, I appreciate, you know, the process that we go through that starts in November. It's pretty comprehensive, the questions. I thought it was a really productive meeting, and I do want to note that I, you know, they were very complimentary of the budget we put forward, so.
Well, we all appreciate the hard work you all put in.
Yep.
And to get to a number in a pandemic year, it was a lot of hard work, and we appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Thank you.
Moving on to the school calendar. I wish Tara was here.
Yes, that's Ms. Luntke tonight.
So for this evening, some modification to next year's school calendar. When we started planning and preparing and putting dates on the books, we realized that this is one of those odd years where Labor Day is very late in the year. And this year, what we would like to do is to move the first day for students to September 1st. What that does is a couple of things. It allows at the tail end of the school year to a lot more time in May and June for AP testing schedules, and those windows are very much prescribed to us as well as SAT testing schedules. And it also allows for more flexibility at the end of the year for those activities that are really important to our school culture. So the new calendar also changes the first three days for students to be early release days. A couple of reasons for that. There are going to be some students that next year will be the first time that they've been in person since March of last year. So this allows us to be much more thoughtful in that transition and make that a smoother process. Also, in the afternoons, we would use these early release days for teacher professional development, for staff professional development. That was something we put in place this year, and it was very well received. So with that, have a motion for your consideration to adopt the revised 21-22 school calendar as presented this evening.
Okay.
Sue, I would basically say it's a three-day slide, right?
That's correct.
So we still finish at a relatively early date on June 10th, which is advantageous.
Yep.
Right.
Because normally, if we followed the calendar as it was, as it is right now, we're starting August 20, I'm coming backwards, 27?
Yes, as the last Wednesday of the month. So that's correct.
Right.
This moves it up to the first Wednesday of September.
Right. Any questions?
I have a question. Two questions. They aren't, those first couple of days aren't normally half-days?
They aren't. That was something that we had put in place this past year.
This year, yeah.
And the feedback was very strong, to the positive.
Yeah, I love it.
Yes.
I just thought it was always the case, so.
It hadn't been.
Yeah, we had like the three full days, so it wasn't a full week, but it was three full days.
Okay, okay. And then who decides? Like, who set that calendar ever that it was the 27th? I don't know what committee does that.
Oh, this one, Ms. Will.
I'm sorry if I opened the bag of worms here.
We need the board historian to present on the.
There is a lot of history there. Somebody was put together many moons ago that set parameters to try to be consistent with the creation of the calendar because we approved it so many years ahead.
Okay.
And this year, based on those parameters, is the outlier on that Wednesday that just kind of had it in an unusual place.
Yeah, as somebody who was on that committee, it incorporated community members. Like, we had parents, it wasn't done at the board level or even central office. It was, it was the most well-attended committee I've ever been on.
Who will decide that moving forward? Is that still a committee, or is that something that Sue does?
It was an Anha committee.
Yeah, well, the formula that was set up at the time is going to work like nine years out of 10 to be like sort of the regular feeling. And this one just is, because it's the earliest possible last Wednesday in August, that's why it just throws everything off for the.
One of those odd years.
Yeah, no, I was just curious as to like, you know, the decision was made to move the February thing or the, you know, I was just wondering if, who, where that came from or who those people are.
It was that committee, yeah.
It was probably a working group of teachers, administrators, community parents.
Yep.
Awesome.
It was probably 30 people on that committee, at least.
Yeah, it was big.
Yeah.
I have a question. I should probably know the answer, but where is the state currently with our thought on snow days versus planned remote learning days? I guess I'm just wondering how, like, how much of a float that Ginten might have.
Yeah, we haven't heard a significant amount. The governor in a press conference last week mentioned that he thought some version of distance learning would be available to parents of children if vaccines weren't available at that time. So we've heard very little about it. I think it'll be woven into that conversation, but I think if the snow days are applicable, that's a topic I would want to bring back up just in terms of consistency because it was an interesting watch with what districts, different districts did, and I think some lessons learned. We could do a combination maybe of the first couple one way, and then we move in a different direction, but I think that would warrant a little more conversation before we finalize anything.
But we.
I got a little feedback on that first snow day.
Just a little bit. Would we hope that that would remain a locally controlled decision? Yes? Or do you think that's going to be?
I think it would be local in how you play it out.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So with that, we do still need a motion and a vote on this. Anyone?
Move to adopt the revised 2021-22 school calendar as presented.
And a second.
Second.
Any more, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. There she carries. Policy revisions. Mr. Sullivan?
So this is where it finally moves from the informational reports up to the recommended actions. We have had these policies, most significantly, the two lengthy policies regarding Title IX revisions through the policy committee first, a first presentation or reading to the Board, a second reading to the Board, and today's the night we vote. So again, I have not heard from any other Board members offline with concern, so I think we should be ready to proceed.
Okay. So with that, I would take a motion, please, on the policies as presented.
Sure. I'll move to adopt the revised Board of Education policies as noted, effective March 23rd, 2021.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Policy Committee, and Mr. Sullivan. Appointment to the Suffield Regional Agri-science Center Consulting Committee.
That's back to me.
All right.
So Simsbury participates and collaborates with the Suffield Regional Agri-science Center as a potential school choice option for students in grades 9 through 12 that are interested in agricultural science. And the state legislature, legislation requires that these agri-science centers have a consulting committee that are made up of some parents and other members of the participating towns that send students to these agri-science centers. So we heard from the director of the Agri-science Center, and he's requested that Mr. Joseph Sillerity be appointed to serve on this consulting committee. So currently, we have three students from Simsbury that attend the Suffield Regional Agri-science Program, and Mr. Sillerity would be a member of this consulting committee. There has to be a motion from the individual Board of Education, in this case Simsbury, to make this official motion and to put this into action. So there is a motion for your consideration at the end of this exhibit.
Okay.
So who does he represent? Is he just, I mean, part of the committee? As apparent, is he representing Simsbury? What is his role on this committee?
He's a parent representative. And what they want to make sure, Todd, is that they have voices from consulting members from all over the participating towns. So he is representing that parent voice, and he does bring knowledge and understanding of this very unique concept of school choice to the table.
Have we had somebody on that committee before?
Every three years.
Every three years.
Yeah.
I just, I was just curious on this, and maybe Neil, you might know from your being principal at the high school. Is this something that is like advertised to kids, like, or do you have to be in a certain track of Henry James to hear about it? Because it's not.
It's certainly something guidance counselors are aware of. It's in our program of studies as an alternate option. So, I mean, there is, when we're not in COVID, a fair, they come to like our eighth-grade night, and they have like a booth up in the cafeteria and can present. So there's an opportunity on eighth-grade night where if a parent sees that and is interested, they can go talk to a representative. So they're not aggressive in their marketing, but they're out there.
Is there any other program at Simsbury High School besides this? For any reason?
There's like the Arts Academy would be similar to this, and, you know.
Magnet schools.
Magnet schools, any of the magnet school choices?
We don't have reps for those.
They all come to that eighth-grade night.
They come to the eighth grade.
They're all invited.
Well, we have parent reps at those things.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no.
The structure's a little.
This is unique to the.
This is very unique to the agri-science choices.
Cool.
Any other questions? All right, so with that, I need a motion, please.
I'll move that the Simsbury Board of Education appoint Simsbury resident Mr. Joseph Slattery as a member of the Suffield Regional Agri-science Center Consulting Committee.
A second, please.
Sure.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Sure you like. Acceptance of donation from the fencing club.
That's back to me again. So per Board policy, any gift to the school system that exceeds $1,500 requires your approval. And tonight, David and Sherry Cordani have offered a gift of $2,500 to be used to purchase equipment and training for personnel for the fencing club and team at Simsbury High School.
No questions.
Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion, yes. Would you like to read the motion, Todd? I will. Move that the proposed gift of $2,500 from the Cordani family be approved, and that is crazy generous and so nice and what a great program.
Very.
Creating more opportunities for others.
Yeah, that's right.
Really wonderful. I need a second.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to the Cordani family. Very generous of you. And cancellation of the April 13th meeting. So due to the closure of school for spring recess, the 12th through the 16th, I am recommending that we cancel the April 13th meeting. Please do note that we all will be at public hearing on April 6th, the week before. So you're not getting a pass on a meeting. Just wanted to make sure we're all clear. I expect you're all there. But with that, I will take a motion to cancel the April 13th meeting.
Move to cancel the Board of Ed. I didn't know if anything else I was going to say. Move to cancel the Board of Education meeting schedule of April 13th, 2021.
Okay. Second, please. All right. All those, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we go to information reports. The hard part's over.
All right, so now we get to hear from our Central School friends. So are we moving to the front?
Shifting.
All right, so this is one of the great pieces about the Board making a decision to have every other meeting take place at one of the schools. And of course, we did that years ago.
Yep.
We're going to have an opportunity tonight to hear from not only our staff, Principal Ms. Hennessy, but some of our students as well. So that's really exciting. One of the themes we've spoken about throughout the year, as we've worked through, has been equity and access. And I know that the team at Central School is taking great pride in their work around learning about equity and learning about themselves and teaching each other, and we're going to hear some unique pieces of that work from some of the different programs they've had. So with that, Ms. Hennessy, I'm turning this over to you for introductions, I think.
Yes, thank you. Well, welcome to Central School. It really is nice to have people here in person. I'm really happy to have the groups of folks with me tonight, and I'm going to introduce Popei Cobia again, who's a Spanish teacher. Maura Miatski teaches fifth grade. Heather Donlin teaches sixth grade. Then we have Adam Kelly, Diane Peterson, and Danielle Sinat. As you may have noticed and know about Central School, we have a little bit of a nautical theme here. So for many, many years, we sailed on the US Lartner, which we need to know is Central spelled backwards. And this vessel really represents, it symbolizes our journey as we learn the ropes of the voyage of life. And as you can imagine, we've had some very smooth seas for many, many years, but this year with the pandemic, we had some very choppy water. But we hoisted our sails, sorry, this mic keeps going in and out. We hoisted our sails, set sail, and really navigated the high seas. But we did it because we worked together as a team with a collective belief that we're stronger together. So I'm really proud of this team and what we pulled together this year. You're aware, as Matt said, of the reopening plan, and tonight, we're going to talk to you about our equity work and how that has played out in our school. The way that we expanded the Black History Month initiative was really a way to enhance our students' social-emotional well-being while also deepen their understanding of equity. And tonight, you're going to hear from individuals who will share with you the extension projects that went forward this year, and I think you're really going to see the passion and inspiration that came alive at Central School. I'm going to pass this to the studio if this keeps working.
Okay. Check, check. Good evening.
Check, check. Good evening. My name is Diane Tobio. I am a K-12 Spanish teacher, and I'm currently working in the elementary schools as well as the Equity Council Representative for Central School. I'm a new mother to a six-month-old and a 10-year-old stepdaughter. Alejandra, our 10-year-old, moved to the United States on March 20th of last year from the Dominican Republic. What my passions are, what motivates me, is why I tell you this. My Spanish lessons have always focused on real-world learning, but during these past two years, I have recentered myself and my lessons, primarily due to the racial injustices occurring globally, nationally, and most disheartening in our own community. Every time I hear of an incident, my heart breaks. Every time I hear another story, it hurts. But my heart wasn't doing anything, so I read and I asked questions. Educating ourselves is the best way to tackle a system, and a system so complex like racism is one that must be broken down. My passion is driven by all of this, and I've been fortunate to have a safe space in the school to do so. I tell this to my students. I say, if you do not know Black history, don't feel like it's too late. Feel inspired, ask questions, educate yourself in order to see progress. This year, I worked with Beth to create a Black History Month here filled with cross-curricular experiences and learning. The packet in front of you is a visual of the Book Museum and the heroes that were studied here at Central. Attach to the packet this QR code, and if you scan it, you'll immediately see a slideshow of the sixth-grade white ball that equates to it. The question is simple yet powerful: Why is Black history important to you? My favorite project done this year is the ABC of Black History. It's right here. This book is written by Rio Cortez, and it's everything that one needs to begin and to continue the process of learning about Black history. This idea started when I mentioned the book to Beth. Within a few days, I received a free shot of the purchased book and the message that read, "This is so amazing." And in front of you are the posters that I drew to go along with the book. The goal was to have it be something that each child could take home and feel proud of. The response was incredible. All Central students were given a poster, and I live read the story for all of the students as well as other students in grades two through six. It was fun, engaging, and powerful. I loved this activity because it was doable for a wide range of ages. It allowed things to have their own spin on the design and colors of the poster, and it also sparked great conversation. So a final thought for you all tonight. I'm going to put my parent hat back on. Having Alejandra come home with her poster, feeling with pride, hearing her discuss how Garrett Norman invented things in order to make the world a safer place, and openly and finally talking about how she feels like an important, proud Latina girl, that's the feeling. That's why I do what I do. Studying marginalized groups can and should be done throughout the year so that every child can feel included, welcome, and part of the great. Thanks for allowing me to speak, and please feel free to take the materials.
Hi, I'm Heather Donovan. I'm a sixth-grade meeting and social studies teacher here at Central. And so in sixth grade, interestingly, even though this was a new initiative, we've always studied civil rights and human rights in our social studies curriculum for many years. It typically falls right around the time that we return from the summer vacation. And as part of this study, we've always done an inquiry into the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the Bill of Rights and the Civil Rights Movement. So in an effort to bridge the past and the present, I tried, you know, to incorporate learning about the late Congressman Don Lewis into our work in our sixth-grade classroom. So this was really exciting to me when Diane brought the Book Museum up, because I was hoping that the Tennessee would buy me a book about Don Lewis. I know I should give it to you. I always felt like not only is he an important colleague of Martin Luther King Jr. and passionate advocate for voting rights, but he was also an award-winning graphic novelist, who would take Comic-Con every year for his trilogy, March, which depicted his experience on the Edmund Pettus Bridge during marches on Selma. And since sixth graders are an era of graphic novels, this is always a great way to bring them into the present. And me on his legacy, these years, a person who represented, bridged from the past to the present, and to help my students see that the struggle for civil rights is ongoing. Like so many, I was sad in my class last summer, but I was determined to share his legacy with my students this year as well. The icing on the cake in being able to receive the books from Ms. Hennessy to study for the Book Museum was a connection that Mrs. Sharon Dong over here in Chen. Sharon's a career professional in sixth grade, and she's worked with me for many, many years in writing and social studies, and so she knows our curriculum really, really well. And as we were embarking on this deeper dive this year, she had sent me, you know, I have an aunt who lives in Atlanta who has knew Congressman Lewis, would you like to speak with her? And so she wanted to be a former sixth-grade teacher, which was fantastic. And I had a long talk with her and talked about how powerful it would be if she would be able to just briefly on Google Meet, come into our classroom and answer the kids' questions and try to focus more, not so much on the marches on Selma or voting rights and other things that Congressman Lewis is, you know, of course well-known for and are so important, but to really humanize them, and that's exactly what she did. So the most important part tonight is to provide advice to her from the kids who have that experience, and each time speak to a little bit about what the Book Museum and studying of Don Lewis in general, what they think about that, and also about their experience with having our guest that Mrs. Dong was able to bring into our classroom. So thank you so much, Sharon. It was absolutely amazing. So first, we're going to have Adam.
One of my favorite parts about reading about Don Lewis was getting to know like all the things that they did tell you in the book, like his favorite color or his favorite song. And we got to do a project with friends, and me and my friend did an offline quiz, and he did a full slide. And I really liked learning about it, like a new person each day. That was important to, like, just to let my life matter. And, yeah, I just really think that it's fun to learn about the people that were important to our world and our lives today.
Um, my opinion, um, I thought that the Black History Month that learned about all the different important people that have contributed to helping us have equality, and even though we're not quite there yet, I think that it's really important that we're learning about it now. Yeah. And one of my favorite parts about Black History Month was definitely doing the projects. Me and my friend did a little slide. And, yeah, I thought that it was just really important that we learned about it and stuff like this.
Hi. One thing that I learned about was just all the different people. And every day, there's a different slideshow that, for whatever project, which is stuff that gives a different texture, and there's a different, like, one repstanding people. Even on a kid in our classroom, they're particularly someone beautiful, and that is many people that are... And I'll tell you, it's cool, and I accept that, things that are like particles and I love things like this, because it's maybe just someone that would be a person, or just someone you would care about.
Thank you.
Can I ask, do any of you remember what was his favorite color?
His favorite color? I remember it's the same. What was his favorite color? He had a girl named Abby. Yeah. And you guys remember what he was on his desk? And what he had on his desk in his office, in Ella?
Yeah, sure, yes. And there were...
And Popeye, yes. And she kind of especially likes taking children around Congress, because they're kind of inspired to work politics and have them... Have them. It was really fantastic. And I can't thank Sharon enough. It was really so powerful and looking. Thank you.
That's so impressive. It's great to have a larger-than-life person feel real.
Yeah.
So thank you for arranging that.
What a connection.
That's fabulous.
Do you want to speak for me? Hello, my name is Mora Knyatsky, and I teach fifth grade here at Central School. After my fifth-year collaborative for this Book Museum, we were the fifth-year talking about, there was this compassion and resilience and eagerness for equity that just came alive. And from then, there's more and more conversations that have come up organically around marginalized groups. So my classroom is involved in this community where kids can ask questions, they can consider perspectives, they can go a lot of mistakes, expand their truth, and their body awareness of the world and their dedication to equity is really what has motivated me this year to continue to act for them, to educate myself, to call on others to do the same. So as a result, I asked my colleagues to take part in the project. And what I'm going to show you tonight is staff at Central reciting Simsberry Public Schools' Equity Statement. And I think that it's a step towards accountability and commitment as we continue on this journey to equity.
In Simsberry Public Schools, an equitable system ensures all members of our community can reach their full potential. For us, equity is the dismantling of racism, all forms of marginalizing that we see, growth, and harm our community legally. The growth or the achievement of equity is everyone's responsibility. Silence supports the oppressor and prevents positive change. Expectations matter because we provide strong beliefs in the beliefs of others around us. Stories matter because they provide insight and understanding into our lean. Health relationships matter because they grow safety, support, and positive relationships. Accountability matters.
All adults have a responsibility to act and implement.
And to maintain ethical practices to ensure students' positive experience. In our relentless pursuit of equity, we'll recognize and address the biases and inequities that exist within our school system. We will hold ourselves accountable to examine data and curriculum, create policies, and provide frequent training to adults and students. We will provide opportunities that guarantee access for all students to meet and exceed academic, social, and civic expectations.
That was great. After seeing it on paper, it's really nice to hear it spoken. So thank you for doing that. Anybody else have anything they'd like to...
I just want to thank you guys for inviting us a little bit tonight on your school journey. Ms. Hennessy, in our conversations, I know how important this work is to you, your faculty, and your students. So it was great to see it come to life tonight. So thank you for giving your time, and you guys did a great job. Kids, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Amazing, yes. Thank you all for coming. Oh, thanks for hosting us.
Susan, if I could just say real quick, we'd be remiss enough to thank Beth for giving us a tour earlier. We saw a beautiful building, and just thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Yep, we appreciate the tour, so...
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It was great.
Thanks, families.
Nobody wants to forget about...
Nice job, students. Thank you, Ms. Solomon. All right. So next up is Latimer Lane renovation project.
Yes. So I will kind of introduce the direction we're headed in here. Start by saying that at last evening's Board of Finance meeting, the decision was made to move forward both the Board of Ed and Board of Selectment operating budgets and year-one capital proposals to the public hearing on April 6th. So what we wanted to do tonight was really two things. Brian had mentioned it in his intro. We want to show the board some of the materials, the video, the handout that we're going to use to start educating the public on the project prior to the referendum. And also, Neil and I had an opportunity to meet with Jeff from TechTone yesterday, and he has a couple bullets and just informational slides to go through pretty quickly to give people a little bit of a scope of the work that needs to be done behind the scenes in terms of creating educational specs, some of the steps we need to take from now until trying to get this approved, should this go to referendum. That decision still needs to be made at that public hearing, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We feel confident that we can get it done. And I just want the board, these are some of the nuts and bolts we really normally don't talk about, just to understand some of those steps and how TechTone will support that work with us.
Great. We'll start with what's been happening over the last few weeks. As Matt indicated, that action by the Board of Finance to move this to public hearing now gives us an opportunity to really let the public know that this is a possibility out there. And hopefully, from our end, the project does move forward, and the Board of Selectment set a referendum date in May where this could be voted on. So we've had two types of meetings. The first was just with staff, Matt, Martha Hogan, who does a lot of our great communication work, Katie Wild, Mike Luzetti, and I, kind of strategizing around what we might pull together. And then, as Brian reported, we pulled in the Communications Committee twice over the last three weeks. We had morning meetings on March 5th and March 19th with the Communications Committee. First, kind of brainstorming and talk about where we might go, and then on the 19th, being able to present drafts of materials that we have developed and are eager to share with the board tonight and hopefully with the Simsberry Public Schools community later in the week. So right now, we have developed really three products. In your folders tonight, I'm sure you've already gotten a look at our informational flyer back in front, two-page document that talks not only about the larger study and some of the demographic needs and the challenges of our aging elementary schools, but then shifts the focus to why Latimer Lane was a priority, identifying what some of the current problems with Latimer Lane is and what potential solutions would be with a renovation project. It also presents some of the population increase that the school has seen to make the public aware of how quickly that school is growing. And actually, when the public sent you a number of letters a few weeks ago, we pulled some comments out of those letters to let the public know. And then a QR code will bring them to a website. The website is the second product that we have really developed. This flyer will be accessible on the website. In addition, the video that will show will be placed there. And then some other materials that TechTone will be giving us will be added to the site over the next few weeks. And we're excited to be able to point people in a direction. If you want information about this project, here's a central location where you can get information right on our website. So, and then thirdly, we put together about a six-minute... Where did we end in the last cut?
Five and a half.
Five and a half minute video that Mike was instrumental. We did a little introduction. You'll recognize the introductory stars of the show, Mr. Curtis and Ms. Selena, to start off talking about the process. And then Mike did a really terrific job narrating a video that shows some of the issues that we wanted to make people aware of. So the intention after this material gets presented to you tonight would be in the Communication from Superintendent's Office Friday to the greater public schools community, in there to have a link to the website so that people can go out and get right there and see that. And as I said, that letter goes Friday. And we'll put it out a couple of times over the next few weeks, and our principals will be able to push it out, emphasizing that while Latimer Lane is the priority, this is a Board of Education plan to address all of the elementary schools over time, and that this was a long-range plan to address, as we frequently said, the average elementary school in this town is 75 years old. And it's, so thus our catchphrase that we came up with through our committee, that trying to emphasize how much attention the elementary schools, and so everything is labeled with, "It's elementary, time to meet the need." And that's kind of our slogan that we're using, and it'll be featured on the materials that we're able to put out. So with that said, with some of the details, and then to play the video for you, I'm going to kick it to Mike for a few minutes.
Absolutely. So to kind of tee that up, thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for hosting us in this big, beautiful, bright, spacious gym. I feel like that could be part of the presentation right there. Thank you to the board for supporting this project and for moving this along as the top priority in the capital plan. I know there are a lot of worthy things, and I appreciate the fact that Latimer has been identified in that process as rising to the top. It's going to focus heavily on the core spaces. Most of you have been in the building, so you've seen the cafeteria that at this point we can't house more than one grade level. The gymnasium that we can house about 40% of the school at one point in time. The undersized library, the windows, the air conditioning, the accessibility issues with the staircases in the middle of the building. But it does give you a nice overview and it will give the public an overview, hopefully help them identify the reasons why, you know, if this goes to referendum, why this would be a project worthy of supporting. So I will queue that video up for you.
While he's doing that, how is, so this is going to go in, in the school communication, how is the public?
Yeah, we can talk a little bit more about that for sure. I'll, I'll address it after.
Over the past several years, our district engaged in long-term study to look at both the infrastructure and long-term enrollment trends in our community. The results of the work is a facility master plan that has allowed our Board of Education to collaborate with Board of Selectment and Finance in a joint effort to address some significant capital improvement needs for our school.
Hello, I'm Susan Selena, Chair of Simsbury Board of Education. It is important to emphasize that our facility master plan was created in order to give us a long-term strategy for meeting the needs of all our elementary schools. Over the past year, our Board of Education has determined that most pressing need is at Latimer Lane School. At 58 years old, it is not only the most crowded elementary school, but also the one most in need of optimization. As we prepare for a referendum on a building project to address the needs of first mark five elementary schools, we would like to share with you some of the issues firsthand.
Welcome to Latimer Lane Elementary School, a proud school characterized station located in the heart of the city. My name is Mike Luzetti, I'm the building principal. Latimer is home to a diverse and expanding population that has grown from 371 to 444 students in the span of just four years, with a growth rate projected to continue that trend. Latimer is also an aging building, remaining largely untopped for the past 15 years. I'd like to share with you some of the main needs here at Latimer.
As you enter the lobby of Latimer Lane, you enter one of the few remaining schools without a secure vestibule entrance. One of the primary benefits of a new or renovated building is enhanced safety and security. As currently constructed, there is no easy way to address the main entrance situation that exists at Latimer Lane in order to cause traffic through the main office of the building. For the contrary, once a visitor enters the building, they have access to the entire school. The layout of the main office itself creates challenges. The nursing office is housed in the back of the office suite with no direct access. Instead, as a child must enter through the secretarial area, pass between the office administrator and the principal office in order to access the nursing room. Each of these spaces are undersized to meet the needs of a school protected to seat 500 students. Continuing with the theme of undersized core spaces, the Latimer Lane Media Center is the smallest in town despite being the second largest elementary school. It was created several years ago by combining two classrooms. As a result, Latimer Lane has access to 2,000 less floors than the other buildings in town. Additionally, this space is used for STEM instruction, teacher meetings, and professional development. The germination of Latimer Lane is once again undersized to meet the needs of its currently 440 students plus staff. With a total capacity of 280 bodies, the school is unable to come together currently for celebrations and assemblies. With extremely low ceilings and antiquated lighting, the space is not well-suited for the high-quality physical education instruction that our teachers continue to provide. Additionally, there is no interior storage. All materials are located in a garage outside of the building. Each year on Veterans Day, our school invites the veterans in our community to celebrate with us as we honor them. Programs like this are in jeopardy unless these core spaces can be addressed. The undersized kitchen and cafeteria at Latimer Lane does not large enough to seat two grade levels at a time. As a result, lunch breaks run from 10:30 in the morning until almost 2:00 each day. Due to the location of the gymnasium and cafeteria in the center of the building, there is not an easy expansion to address the needs of either of these two core spaces. An additional concern at Latimer Lane is building accessibility. There is currently a staircase that divides the lower section of the building, housing the library, cafeteria, art room, gymnasium, office, nurses' office, and primary grade classrooms, from the music rooms and students in grades 3 through 6. Once again, due to the layout of the building, we are unable to address this concern with the addition of a ramp. The end result is that the upper hallway is only accessible by exiting the building and re-entering through a side entrance to the building. Latimer Lane, after 58 years, has found itself to be a building in need of updates and repairs simply to maintain. With crowded classrooms, crowded shared office spaces, and a repurposed stage combined with a lack of storage of all the meanders of a building working to function beyond this As you've seen, the needs at Latimer Lane are many, and we have the opportunity to address those needs. It's elementary, time to meet the need.
Any comments? Thoughts?
That was really good. I'll say that's great. You did a great job.
You did a fine job.
Really great job. Really points all the problems and nice job, Mike.
I thought that was really, I'm curious, and I almost wish we could, yeah, just how many, how many classes were in that gym for Veterans Day in that picture?
Um, more than the number that's printed on the side of the wall. So I mean, it's gotten to a point where, you know, we've had, you know, last year we used the stage and seated our veterans on the stage because there wasn't enough space to seat on the floor. We've really hit that max capacity where it's, it's, it's just a challenge.
Yeah. I mean, you could see how crowded that was, and that's not your whole school.
Yep.
So, and again, thanks, I mean, the Communications Committee was really a sounding board as we developed these materials. The Communications Committee doesn't meet regularly, really. It's like when we need them that we call them in and, and so really appreciate the chance for them to weigh in on what we've done. Todd asked a question about like, you know, it's sort of easy for us to push this out to the school community, but getting out more broadly. I'm happy to say that the document that we send usually a couple of times a year, the communicator, which goes to every household, will come out the week of April 5th. So that plan is there for, to highlight this project and be able to push out information to members of the community who want to go to that website and get more information. We also are developing, as you go by the schools, especially in the high-traffic areas like on Firetown Road where Henry James and past high school, you're going to see some sandwich boards that just make people aware that a Latimer Lane renovation project is something that's, so, something that's on the horizon. So assuming, you know, a lot of this is still public hearing on the 6th. Public hearing can be extended to the, to the 20th if that's what the Board of Finance decides to do. And the Board of Selectment would set a referendum date, we think, on April 26th. That would be the logical meeting that the Board of Selectment would, would set a referendum date. We think the logical referendum date would be May 18th, but all of this is still to be determined.
We only get to May 18th if they hold it over for a second public hearing. We're at May 4th if they don't.
I'm not sure, Amy, is that true?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll see, we'll, we'll have to make adjustments to our communication plan based on that. And so that's sort of what we've done to, to put the communication piece together. And then I want to take just five minutes to talk about the grant process, but are there any questions about this piece?
I just, this is where I always get jumped. I want to know, we are trying to inform everybody as much as we can while we can, but we can only do that until public hearing on the 6th. Is that correct?
No, until a referendum date gets set.
When they set the referendum.
So if they set the refer, if they end the public hearing on the 6th and say it's going to referendum.
Well, our Board of Selectment sets the referendum, not Board of Finance.
Okay. So if they say on the 6th that it's going to go to referendum, at the next Board of Selectment meeting, that date gets set. So that's when we stop promoting anything.
Using our own materials, correct.
Okay. All right. So our timeline could end sooner than later. So we just want to make sure we get as much out.
You have to take something off of a website?
Yes.
We have to take it off the website?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Uh, I thought we could leave it up, but not point people to it.
No. And that's what we did with Henry James, everything came down prior.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we, we've got like three weeks to get this adjusted.
Yeah, we have basically the month of April to start, starting this Friday, let, the end of March and the month of April to really raise awareness that this project is out there in the need for.
But potentially that could end with the Board of Selectment's first meeting in April. If, or their meeting after the 6th, which would be that, whatever that Monday is. That's, that's all I'm thinking. Because we haven't been held over to a second public hearing in a lot of years. So I'd rather we kind of have a good.
No, they, they've done it.
Yeah, the last, since I've been here, so the last two years, they've done two public hearings.
Did they? Okay, my mistake. All right.
Just that the involvement's the real first one and sometimes they hold over to address any kind of lingering questions. I know that's what we did last year, I remember.
Yeah. I know they're hoping to do one this year, but.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we concentrate early.
Yep.
No, absolutely. Good point.
Okay.
All right. And then the other piece for just a few minutes, you'll see in your folder tonight, we just did some printed slides for you. And this is to talk about, you know, we have to start the work now whether all of this goes through, which we hope it will certainly. But a grant application to the state would be due on June 30th. So we can't wait until May 18th if this thing gets approved to start what's a pretty significant work of a grant application. So you'll see here just two slides that we placed in your folder that what the next steps are. First is, while it says to develop options and study the benefits of new versus renovate as new, what that really means is it's a small team at the state that works on school construction grants, including one major player who makes a visit out to the school site. So we have been told now that this has moved to public hearing, that the biggest task for this week is to schedule that meeting, get that team out to our site. And it's really their direction that so we, most of the time, they're going to tell you the project should be a renovate as new, that there's enough value in the core facility that it should become a renovate as new project. And we've talked about that, meaning you have to keep at least 55% of the, the building and then, you know, add from there. So.
Is that the, who all the initials belong to, that group?
Pardon me?
Who's the OSCG in all that?
Office of School Construction Grants and Reimbursement.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So, and then at that point, they will really give us direction, we think, as on a renovate as new. Developing educational specifications, that's a Friday morning at nine meeting that Mike and I have. Jason Casey will be joining us with Jeff Wazinski to really talk about what spaces do you need in a new Latimer Lane? Like how many classrooms? You know, an OTPT room, we need a speech room, we need a PLC room, we need a library, we need a gym. It's really outlining what are the specifications that have to go into a building. And then Jeff will go to work on, I know we've had some questions about where does this get to more exact costs? It's through this process that we, you know, but as Jeff has said in your meetings, he's comfortable with the estimates that he's made because they're middle-of-the-road estimates. But this is where it gets to a little bit more specifics and he'll be developing some, some graphics around that. And then the grant application, it'll be some assist from Jeff Wazinski. Jason Casey will be doing a lot of heavy lifting on this grant application too. And really, we have to meet the June 30th deadline or it can't be considered in this next cycle that would go to the legislature. So we intend, assuming that a positive referendum vote happens, that we would be putting an application in for June 30th. So what, what's involved with an application? That's the second slide. And the way that Jeff has organized this for us is what would, what would Tecton do to support us? What, what does the school really need, the school team really need to do between June 30th? And then what does the town need to do between now and June 30th? So on the Tecton side, obviously, we've already done our enrollment projections, that's, that's pretty easy. A space standards worksheet is some of those conversations that Jeff Wazinski has had with you over the course of time about what, what's the allowable square footage for the population and the purpose of different spaces? And doing a worksheet that, you know, lets you efficiently, you know, kind of maximize the space that you can, you can use given, given the population in the school. A site analysis, that's a different team that has to come out and do some environmental work to make sure that any construction work is not doing any kind of, you know, danger to the environment and making sure that, that everything that, in terms of the requirements is taken care of. That would be a visit that would get scheduled after that first visit from the core team. And then it would really be Jeff and his team that would do the cost estimates for us. So the, by the time we got to June 30th, the, the grant would contain those more specific cost estimates. What we have to work on, and that's why we're getting to it at Friday morning at nine, is the educational specs. And Mike actually already drafted a document that's a great start to help us with our nine o'clock meeting. Fortunately, we're in good shape because there's a huge emphasis on your school safety plan being up to date and submitting your school, your completed school safety plan. You may have remembered in the news a few years ago, when a school safety plan had become a requirement, there were still something like 100 districts that hadn't turned one in yet. And so that would have stalled your ability to go get a school construction grant. We're, we're in great shape on this. We can, we can easily meet this requirement. And then the approval for renovation status, that, that SC, SICG 2000 that is noted, is really the, the application itself. The application is a electronic application that is pretty extensive and that, you know, again, it's, it's mostly Jason Casey with an assist from Jeff to finish that. And then lastly, what does the town of Simsbury need to do? You will need to approve the Board of Education, the, the education specifications before June 30th. So you will see an agenda item in May or early June where you approve, you know, we'd probably try to have some, the, the intention is to do this during April, give you a first presentation about it at the first May meeting and then have you voting on the specifications at the second May meeting. Because then there are other, it has to go in front of the Board of Selectment Public Building Committee, at least to say that we've done the specifications and that we are applying for a grant. And then we have to produce, hopefully, if there's a positive referendum vote, we have to provide a notarized copy of the results in order to say that the town has approved to that. And those are some of the things, there's others, but those are sort of the main things we would need to produce. So while there's certainly a lot of work to do, works, you know, it's, getting at this work is making it start to feel real and that's great. And it's really now a matter of where this heads with our boards and whether we will have a, a referendum to be voting on on May 18th.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you to the Communications Committee.
Yeah, first, I was just going to say thanks on behalf of Facilities and Enrollment, that, these communications are great and hopefully will be very helpful to the community. But Neil, I got a question because it repeatedly comes up with me, people ask me this question, just about the 50, keeping the 55% of the core space. Could you take another minute and just kind of walk us through what that really means? Is, because then are you, are you really then, in a renovate as new scenario, you're not really then, you know, gutting it from, from floor to ceiling? What are, what are you keep, what constitutes that 55%? I guess is what, what I keep getting at.
Square footage. So.
Yeah, what is that? Rooms is that, how does that?
Overall square footage. You have to keep 55%. You have to keep 55% of the overall square footage.
So you could redefine that square footage. It just has to be existing building.
Correct.
Could build a new wing.
So they might go into that existing cafeteria and gut it floor to ceiling and, I mean, and say, this is inappropriately sized for a cafeteria for a school for this size, but if we gut this thing and redo it, it could be a media center. That type of thing is what, what would happen in a renovate as new. And there is certainly a, you know, meaning if you have to keep 55% of it, you, you may demolish part of the old Latimer Lane too in order to kind of make room for, you know, different square footage. So it's, it's, it's not necessarily that all of the existing building will be kept.
So you keep, so you have to keep 55% of the square footage, but you could expand and that might not.
Correct.
There may no longer be 55% of the new building.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
And some of that newer construction or newer build is what could enable you to keep school in session and use that as swing space while you renovate the other part of the school.
Right.
So start with the new part first and.
So similar to what happened at Simsbury High School 15 years ago, where that whole front wing now, which is called the C Wing with the science labs, all of that was built first. And school was going on and the, the other existing parts of the building. And then that opened and they closed the rest of the school down a wing at a time. And we moved classrooms in and now they renovate that wing and we move them back. And in a smaller scale, that's what would happen with, with an elementary. You would see probably a classroom wing built first so that then students could be moved into it.
Is that part of the educational specifications?
How, how you're going to do the swing?
The, that's, that's really more architectural phasing plan. The, the specifications are really, how many rooms do you need and what kind of rooms do you need? It would be when you went to more specific architectural drawings that you would get to that type of schedule.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Good question.
Thank you all. Really, this is great.
This is exciting.
I love it. Elementary, perfect. You guys did a great job putting it all together, so thank you. Anything we can do to help get the word out, we can do that. So, for as long as we're allowed. All right, so with that, we are back to our second public audience since the public left us, unless there is any. Unless Ms. Hennessy would like to say something. All set. All right, so next board meeting is Tuesday, April 27th, and we are at Tooten Hill School. Reminder to put the public hearing in your calendars for April 6th. I'll count you all. What time, 5:40? Six o'clock? Is that, and Zoom? So Amy, you'll make sure the full board gets included on that Zoom invite, please? Thank you. Okay, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second, please? All right, all those in favor? Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, John.